Yes, good morning, good morning. I'd like to call everyone to order for our special called virtual meeting for today, Thursday, April the 23rd, 9:00 a.m. I think we have four out of five, or are all commissioners here?
City Clerk, do you want to go ahead and take?
Our commissioners here.
Let's have the city clerk go ahead and take roll call.
Madam Clerk, would you take roll call, please?
Mayor Paris?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Cottle?
Here.
Commissioner Saris?
That was a question.
Just if you're present, I'm taking roll call.
I'm here.
Commissioner Terry?
I'm here.
Commissioner Atkins?
I'm at home.
Close it.
Alright, so we have.
Okay. Um.
And.
Item 1 is resolution.
Turned off. We have two, we have two of the five cameras turned off. Mr. Mayor, your camera's turned off, and Commissioner Atkins' camera's turned off.
The camera's not turned off, is it?
Tell us who's off.
Uh, the mayor's camera is not showing, and Commissioner Atkins is not showing.
Yes. Am I showing it now?
How about now?
No, we're still not seeing you.
I kinda like not seeing you, but that's, that's just me. Have you got me, David?
How about now?
No. Nope.
Have you got me, David?
No.
No.
Oh.
Hear you, but can't see you.
Well, I'll try it again.
There's Sony.
How about now?
I got Atkins now. Whoop, he paused.
Have you got me, David?
No, still don't have you, sir.
Probably best that you don't see me this morning.
Well, it's part of a requirement by the law.
That you see me and not hear me?
Uh, when we're doing the virtual meetings, we're supposed to be able to see you. Ah, there you go, sir. I know.
There you are.
I get it.
Well, I can't see you, David, and I can't see Kevin, and I can't see Denise. Is Stephen Dexter with us?
Supposed to be, I don't see him yet.
Well, while we're figuring all this out, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a suggestion, a adjustment to our agenda this morning.
Uh, uh, hold it, we cannot do that. This is special called meetings against the law to alter your agenda.
I don't wanna alter, I don't wanna alter our agenda, I just wanna move things around.
Ah, okay. Alright, your city attorney has now arrived.
Alright. Well, as if it's proper.
We're all here, you're ready to go.
Sorry about that, guys, I had some technical issues this morning.
Don't feel bad.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My request, Mr. My request, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Atkins, what are your?
My request is to move item number three, the Center for Public Safety Management, to number six, move it as the last item for our discussion this morning.
Well, on a special called meeting, we typically.
Are you making that as a motion, sir?
I would like to, if it's proper to. Yeah. Stephen, were you gonna wait in?
Yeah, I was gonna say, on a special called meeting, on a special called meeting, we typically don't entertain motions in that matter, as we can't deviate from exactly what's stated there. Um, it would, it'd be my preference that we not alter the agenda as it's presented. However, if you get to a particular item, and you vote to table it, and then take it off the table, you could do it that way, but I don't think the agenda needs to be altered.
Okay, I just wanna change the location, 'cause I think that's the one I have, I thought we'd have a lot more discussion for, get everything else finished, and have plenty of time to discuss that item. But, we'll do it at number three, if that's what the law requires.
What, what I'm saying is, the, the law will require the agenda to remain.
Stephen, are you saying, are you saying that, um, are you saying that law? I couldn't hear you, Stephen. I couldn't hear any of that. David, could, could, can you hear all of us?
Yes, I can. Stephen, do you want to repeat your, um?
Stephen?
Off line.
Yes.
There he is, he's back. Stephen, do you want to, um, repeat your guidance on the agenda, please, for the commission?
Sure. It's, it would be my position that we do not alter the agenda as presented, um, because it's a special called meeting. And that, in the event that you get to a particular agenda item, i- if you get to a particular agenda item, in the order it is on the agenda, and you wish to table it, then that would be the appropriate time to do it, but not to alter the agenda.
So if he wants to, if he wants to table it until the end of the, uh, end of the agenda, he could do that?
He could do that when you get to that particular item.
Okay, you got that, Mr. Atkins?
Yeah, but we can then take it off the table for discussion, right?
That's, that's correct, but you need to make a motion to do that at the end of the stated agenda.
Okay, I'm fine, okay.
Okay, item one is resolution number 2020 dash 04 dash 23 dash 01. This is, uh, with reference to meeting protocols for the, uh, novel coronavirus known as COVID-19.
I'll make a motion to, uh.
City Attorney?
I'll make a motion to approve for the sake of discussion.
Second.
We have a second, right? So we can have discussion, I, I brought it up, I got two things. One of them, um, and we can't do anything about it right now, is that, unfortunately, the public is not seeing this live, and I've had a few comments on that, but hopefully we can fix that going forward. Um, secondly, um, I have a problem with number five.
Motion for the resolution.
What?
I couldn't hear that, David, could you hear that?
Yeah, there was a, uh, motion and a second, uh, open for discussion, and Commissioner Saris has, uh, stated that, uh, he has two concerns, the first being that the meeting's not being livestreamed. The meeting is being livestreamed, it's currently livestreamed, the public cannot participate in this, but this meeting is currently livestreamed via our YouTube channel, so we are livestreamed. And then the second, uh, was a specific item, I believe it was number five, uh, on the list. So, uh, if Commissioner Saris wants to continue, um, that's where he is with discussion, sir.
Yes, thank you. I've got a little problem with, uh, all regular scheduled meetings being canceled. Um, I think as we try to find some normalcy in our lives, that we should continue on with regular scheduled meetings, how they, how we do them doesn't concern me, we can do it just as we are now, but I think that we need to get back to regular scheduled meetings.
If I can respond to that, um, that particular item, Commissioner, is the, specifically in reference to the guidance issued by the Attorney General. You're, you're required, our regular meetings say that they occur at a certain day and time, um, the second and fourth Mondays of the month, at 5:30 at City Hall, because we are deviating from that particular schedule, and we are not having live in-person meetings, by law, it's not a regular scheduled meeting. So, this is a somewhat of a case of semantics, where we cannot have regularly scheduled meetings, because we won't be meeting in City Hall the second and fourth Mondays of each month. So, you can have meetings as often as they are necessary, however, every meeting will be a special called meeting, and that is not unique to the city of Danville, that is across the state for every public agency, so school boards, cities, counties, what have you.
So, I appreciate that, and you know, a lot of times I bring up questions, because not only myself needs clarification, but the public does as well. Um, so, I, I'm gonna make this statement, that legally, you've explained it well, as the mission, and I hope my fellow commissioners will feel the same, I think we need to have some meetings, at least twice a month, and kind of get back to where we're at, in terms of discussion.
And you're certainly free to meet as necessary, you just need to consider the fact that the governor and attorney, well, particularly in compliance with the governor's order, has ordered that no meetings take place unless business is essential. So, unless there is an, an act, a specific actionable item that necessitates a meeting, then it's, um, it may, may not be necessary. Um, so if there, if there is specific actionable items for consideration, then there should be a meeting, however, uh, if they are pure, if there are items that are purely administrative, and can be handled under the emergency powers, then, then that is, that is how business should transpire, until we, the state of emergency is lifted. But like today, there, there are certain items that just require your attention and approval.
Stephen, if, if I may, um, the items that we're discussing today, I think in reference to Brother Rick's comment, we could have done this Monday to 27th at 5:30, which is a normal time, but it would still be a special called meeting, I think is what you're saying, right?
I'm not sure if that's what he's saying, or not, that, if you wanted to schedule a special called meeting on that time, you could have done so, however, the, the contracts that are before you are time sensitive, so they could not actually wait until the 27th, and in order to have the health benefits roll out, um, on the timeline that is scheduled, and to not cause any disruption to benefits to employees, it would be important, uh, for you to act upon those today, so those documents could be executed, and the benefits can be put into place on the timeline that's required by our insurance broker.
I, I understand that, and that's, that's what made the meeting today, uh, necessary. But if there was something, say, that comes up between now and the 4th of May, or the 11th of May, we could say we're gonna have a meeting on the 11th of May, which is the second Tuesday, I mean, second Monday, at 5:30, but it would still be a special called meeting. I think Rick is saying if we had one at 5:30 on one of those days, it would look like folks were back to doing some regular types of business, I think. But I'm okay, I'm okay, yeah. The, the thing about today's meeting is that, um, the five of us were not given any options, it was just said you're gonna have the Thursday to 23rd at 9 o'clock. Um, that was, that was a little different for a special called meeting, but again, we're hearing that was a good, it was a good call, 'cause all five of us were available, but it'd be important to have some options when these things do come up.
That's reasonable.
I think, Mr. Atkins, are you asking for some input on when we do schedule these meetings?
Yes. Yes. I have to call for the question on item number one, we have a motion on the floor, I'd like to call for the question.
Question has been called, um, are we ready for a vote, Commission?
I wanna make one more comment, and I'm ready to vote, but, uh.
Hang on just a second, before you do, Rick, um, Mr. Atkins, would you, uh, would you rescind your question, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, go ahead, Rick.
Right. Okay, so, um, again, I agree with everything said, and especially with your comments, Stephen, about I wouldn't wanna meet just for the sake of meeting, um, but we have in the past been able to have some meaningful agendas for two, twice a month. Um, so, um, I think that, uh, wanna give some serious thought to not, not just passing everything up, and, um, not having discussions about it, so, just keep that in mind, and I hope the rest of the commission agrees with me on that.
I have, I have a question, uh, Stephen, um, okay, so we've got an Attorney General's, uh, directive, um, and it pretty well spells it out. Why, why do we need this resolution?
Good question, because we have an ordinance that requires us to meet every, uh, two weeks at a certain time, and conduct business in a certain way. However, we also don't have any procedures in place for video conferencing, and it was necessary through the adoption of this protocol to lay those out, um, both for you all, and for the public, on how businesses will, our business will transpire during the state of emergency. So, add an abundance of transparency and caution, um, the ord, the resolution is rather presented before you. And I, I should say also, that, you know, this is the recommended best practice approach from, uh, the Municipal Turners Association with Kentucky League of Cities, and so we're following guidance and best practice, um, through that, um, recommendation as, as well.
So, I guess I would just like to request, if we, whenever we do need a meeting, we get, we make it on the time and dates that are as close to our normal schedule as possible.
I think that can, that can be considered, um, you know, ultimately, and I don't know the business of the city, and what chance, is what is, uh, going on, as far as, these times, you're, there are a lot of additional, um, pressures on staff, I, I know, so perhaps that's why the, this meeting in the morning was efficient, um, to be had. I'll also say, you know, when we have special called meetings, it's not unusual for us to do them in the mornings.
Yeah.
And, and I don't perceive there being any special called meeting that's gonna be of a, uh, substantial duration. Now, I may, I can be, I may be surprised by that, but, um, these will, will be kind of, um, get in, discuss, pass, and get out, kind of meetings.
Yes, yeah.
I wanna make sure, I wanna make sure that the commission, um, 'cause we've all had a lot of talk behind, uh, amongst ourselves individually, I wanna make sure the commission is looking at item five on the last page of, of the, uh, resolution, wanna make sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, and that's precisely what Commissioner Saris was concerned about originally, that, that I explained, that technically, that's, that's the way it, it has to be.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that, and that was too, also, also, Commissioners, that is a resuscitation of the law, that is not a subjective writing on my part, or, um, recommended by the city manager, that is a restatement of the law, that second sentence.
Stephen, I, I concur with you, I agree with you, uh, I think it's important that we have, um, we need to do as little as possible during this timeframe, that's not part of the emergen, emergency situation that we're involved in, you know, that, that's my point of view, I agree with that. And I understand about not meeting the City Hall. Uh, I think what we're here, was that we've got five dedicated commissioners who, uh, are wanting to get some of the, be about doing some of the business, and unfortunately, being about doing some of the business right now, means that we stay out of City Hall, and let the staff do its work, and, you know, it's a, it's a new day for all of us, so, I, I concur with what you're saying, it's not how I operate. I had a, uh, a conversation with a citizen, I'll call her name, she won't mind, Patsy Trolinger, and she said, "Mr. Atkins, I know you're having a hard time." What are you talking about? Said, "I don't see you hugging, and shaking hands, and talking to people, and walking the beat," and I said, "No ma'am, I've been told I'm a senior citizen, so I've been staying all up down, so..." I understand, so, we're alright, yeah.
So, are you calling the question, Mr. Atkins?
Yes, yes, sir.
And this is, uh, this is picky, I'm sorry, but just a, uh, an error probably in spelling, uh, back to page two, Stephen, whereas the Attorney General opinion specifically excuses the agencies, I don't think it meant to say it at form, did you, did you mean from? If we're gonna pass this document, I think we need to make sure it states what you want it to state.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, let's see.
Is two or four?
Yes, that, yes, that should be, that should say "from" agencies instead of "from."
And again, I, I hate to be picky, but if we're, if we're gonna say this is a legal document, I guess we need to make sure it says what it says, right?
Hey, with Rick.
I've made the change.
Hey, Rick, that's what we've been missing, right?
I just wanted to let you all know that the sound on the live feed is apparently not working.
Oh, God.
Say that again.
The sound on the live feed on YouTube is apparently not working, so they can't hear anything we're saying.
We need, if that is the case, we, we need to take a break until that's verified, um, that the live viewing and audio is available. See, and if we have this resolution passed, we have our, we have our protocol for that.
Will we pass it real quick?
Let me ask, let me ask the question, then, do we just wait until that gets fixed technologically, or do we all need to sign off, wait until we get an all-clear sign, and then come back?
No, I, I think we can hold on, I mean, I'm, I'm not an IT person, so, David, someone's gonna have to chime in there with that expertise, um, while they work on establishing the live feed, but I think we can stay on, and while that live feed is reestablished.
I know, uh, I wasn't aware of that, so, uh, IT must have come in and let them know, I see IT on there, so I'm messaging them now. Um, as a backup, we are also recording the meeting, so that we actually have a separate recording, uh, which is capturing everything, and that also, uh, will be uploaded to Facebook, um, and other sites, uh, immediately following the meeting, but let's check with IT on this.
I'm getting notes from people that they, the live audio is fixed, and they are hearing it on their end.
Who knows about the live audio?
I'm being told the comment feature was turned off, I guess, does that matter?
No, it doesn't matter, the, the public has a right to view, the public does not have a right to comment, um, either in writing, or, um, in person, or, you know, orally, at, and at these meetings, so the, the right of the public is protected if they can view it.
And for clarification, on your live streaming on YouTube, comments have never been turned on, uh, that goes back to well before I even got here, it's always been disabled, meaning that when you're live streaming your meetings, um, they've never been able to comment.
Hey, that's, that's okay, yeah.
Okay, are we ready to proceed on?
I was gonna get more coffee.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
We get five cups of it.
I don't know if the IT folks are comfortable yet, that it's been resolved or not.
This may be the shortest agenda with the longest timeframe that we will have had.
Is Kevin on this broadcast?
Kevin?
What, I'm sorry?
Oh, there you are, so I couldn't hear you, Kevin Cottle.
I'm, I'm, yeah, I can't see you either by how you're there.
Mr. Atkins, at the top of your screen, you'll be, you should be able to hit the button that says "view everyone."
The top of my screen? What's it look like, a bunch of people?
The top of the menu, there across the top, it'll say "view everyone."
I'm not seeing none, let's see. Oh, I see everyone, okay, let's see what happens. Nope. I'm on my iPad, but I see a list of attendees.
Try to say something else, James, if you're not seeing everyone.
What? Did you see, Rick?
I'm still being told there's no audio.
on it right now, um, but it's a intermittent feed issue.
Matt just sent a message, it said IT is good right now.
Are we ready to continue?
If IT says that we are, um, back, then we are legally able to proceed.
David, can you confirm that, please, that we're good to go?
I'm watching the chat off of the live feed, uh, Karen Hardy says she can hear the audio now, it says that we're back live, so we're good to proceed. It says that we're back live, so we're good to proceed.
Okay, okay, so the que- this, we're back to item one, I believe the question has been called, hasn't it, Mr. Atkins?
Yes, sir.
We're ready for the, uh, vote line? All opposed? I could not hear whether that, what the vote was, David, you wanna repeat or Stephen tell me?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be best if, uh, the, uh, Madam City Clerk takes roll call for you on votes.
David, can you hear?
I can hear you, sir, um, I'm advising that your city clerk goes ahead and takes roll call votes.
Stephen, can you hear?
I can hear you, yes, and I, we advise-
I'm sorry, say again.
We advise that the city clerk take a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, proceed.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
City Clerk take a roll call vote.
Mayor Panero?
Hello?
Is it my computer or is it?
Ashley, have you taken the vote?
I'm on mute, I'm waiting for your vote.
You've got my vote.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Saris?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor, are you on a walkie talkie?
No. Maybe I should be. I thought he was in, in an air hangar at some Air Force base behind a F-150.
You're hard, you're hard to hear, you're-
Yeah, Mayor, you can hear me cut out.
Okay.
The nurse is really delaying.
Bear with me a minute. Maybe I should pay my bill, huh?
You should talk to your landlord about your wifi speed.
Okay, uh, can you hear me now, is that better?
Yeah, seems to be better.
Seems to be.
Okay, let's move on to item two, which is contracts related to the, uh, healthcare and any agreements. Chair will accept the motion to approve contracts as presented.
Go move.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins, how about a second?
Second.
Thank, Commissioner Terry, we're in discussion. I'm gonna ask Mr. Boyd to, uh, lead the discussion if you wish to.
I do, uh, thank you, Mayor, I was, uh, all contracts, as we know, we've had some, you know, significant reform this year, we've made significant carrier changes. Um, all contracts have been reviewed by City Attorney Stephen Dexter, he's made some recommended revisions. Uh, we've got all contracts, uh, back with the recommended revisions, with the that we anticipate to have back, uh, probably today, uh, once we're TPA. Um, we do need to move forward with the recommendation for the mayor to sign the contract so we can ensure that we adequate cover for all employees back to five. Uh, the, all the carriers are moving forward with, under the, the assumptions, uh, contracts will be signed as is. Also moving forward with, you know, the proper enrollments, but we need to, um, make sure that we get these terms back in place, probably sign by, end of, close of business tomorrow.
And Randy, if I may interrupt, uh, on, on one point you made there, you said it's the uh, expectation of vendors that they sign the agreements as is. I'm assuming if that's the case, then the recommended revisions have been made?
Yes. They have, Stephen, we are waiting on, uh, two. Uh, one is with Trustmark TPA, the other one was with the, uh, the HMS contract, all other revisions have been that company was ready for signature with your recommended changes.
Okay.
So.
Very good, what, what I'd like to, to do, just for the sake of preservation, I'm gonna have to revise my resolution slightly for it.
Any further questions?
Uh, yes, Randy, would you mind just stating for the record, um, the particular vendors, you don't have to go into agreement, uh, detail into all the, the titles of the agreements and documents. However, will you just provide a listing for the record of the, um, vendors and the general service they will provide, or just, so Shang Tsai Solutions made the following recommendations and they are as followed?
Yes, we will have the Trustmark, which will be our TPA for our medical plans. Uh, Cigna is our medical provider, uh, we will have Delta Dental for, or excuse me, Delta for dental and vision coverage. Uh, we will have Standard Life that will provide our, our basic and, uh, voluntary life, as well as our disability plans. And we will have, uh, Admin America that will be our provider for our, as our Cobra TPA. And, uh, then Crum and Forrester will be our provider for our stop loss coverage.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm gonna follow Stephen's, oh, I'm gonna follow Stephen's lead, can, Randy, can you talk about, uh, we have it in front of us, but the public might like to know, um, how you've saved the city money, um, what was presented to you originally? And we've got it down to a statement that says we're gonna be flat for the coming year, can you, you comment on that?
I can, it's a good question, Commissioner Saris. So when we looked at our plans, we made some utilization changes. Uh, the one is basically we've moved to a, a stronger TPA that will, um, will be better with cost containment strategies. Also, one of our key changes is we moved to a new pharmacy benefit manager, uh, which will, you know, we anticipate, you know, savings in the range of 300 to 400,000 this year, um, based on them being able to go back and look at, you know, alternative solutions on prescriptions, as well as getting manufacturer rebates. Uh, another thing that we looked at and when, was the utilization of our current healthcare services. Uh, one, one key function of that was our dental coverage, we had a very rich plan. Um, and looking at that, we essentially, uh, found that we weren't utilizing basically what we were paying for, so we made some adjustments there and took those cost allocations and, you know, reductions to basically align with what our, our employees were actually using on healthcare coverage. And in addition to that, you know, we were able to enhance benefits for employees, even for the disability plans with, along with, you know, essentially getting more benefits at a break even point with anticipation that our PBM, uh, USRX will probably give us an additional three to $4,000 savings this year on prescription drug costs.
Thank you, I think that was good information to share.
Do you need a formal motion for this?
Randy, I wanna thank you and, uh, city manager. Uh, think the motion was, was, was the motion made and seconded?
No, I don't believe so, the city clerk can verify that, but I don't, I do not believe the motion was made. And if I can, if I can be specific, um, for, for a moment, um, if we could say that, um, this, in your motion, that you approve all, um, agreements and contracts, uh, regarding the city self insured insurance plan for fiscal year 2020, 2021, um, as presented, then that would be sufficient.
Com- Commissioner Terry, wasn't that your motion?
Yes, go move.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Uh, any further discussion? I'd like to thank, um, our new human resources director, Randy Boyd, and our new city manager, David Milliron, for spending tremendous amount of time and energy on a, uh, on this, uh, part of our, part of our finances and benefits.
Agreed.
If there's no further comment, all in favor, uh, well, city clerk, if you'll do a roll call, please.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Mr. Saris?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Item three is, uh, contracts for the Center for Public Safety and Management. Um, do I hear a motion for discussion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, we are in discussion.
Can you, can you clarify, was that motion for approval?
Yes, it was motion for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Jay H, you wanted to table this, you probably have some comments, I'd like to hear them.
Oh, I don't, I don't have to table, after all the discussion on number one, no sense in tabling this. What, 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 one of my hesitation is that it's a, it's a consultant and we've been dealing with consultants and the fallout of consultants for many years, that's the first comment. Um, the second comment, I was just gonna ask somebody to walk us through this thing, cause, uh, it was nice receiving it yesterday, but I read the letter that I got, an email, and then I've got this packet and, um, there's some pretty good shows on television last night, so I couldn't dedicate all my time to this packet, so. I can ask somebody just to walk us through the packet, that's why I was gonna do it at the end, cause I figured it'd be a long walk, but maybe not.
Mr. Milliron, if you would, uh, if you would, uh, do the honors on that, I think it'd be beneficial.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, obviously, uh, uh, Commissioner Atkins was watching Law and Order, Fire, I'm sure, because it's pertinent to, uh, the, uh, consultant agreement that hand. In this case, this is a, uh, panel expert of both, um, fire and, uh, police that will do a deep dive, look into our police and fire and really look for, um, efficiencies and addressing, uh, a, a, basically a, a game plan, if you will, uh, for how we can address most of the concerns that have been in the police and fire. For instance, in here three months, um, we're on the verge of going out and asking, uh, to, uh, recruit for a new fire chief. Um, and, uh, what we continue to hear is that there are staffing issues, that they're overworked, overburdened, that their call volume has gone through the roof, um, that, um, they're having difficulty, um, recruiting. Um, so what we wanna make sure, before we just simply throw additional resources at, is that we want an independent voice to come in, a panel that's actually, it'll take roughly about 120 days to do a deep dive, including all of the data analysis from the 911 center, to find out, are we appropriately staffed? Um, are there changes that we can make in our structure, in our organization, that'll make us more efficient and make it a better department? Um, I asked the, uh, police chief and the fire chief and the 911 director to all weigh in on the agreement. The police chief is here, I've sent you, um, his comments. Um, the fire chief has said that if it's the will of, um, the City Council Commission and the city manager to move forward, um, they fully support it because it addresses and will address all of the concerns that the departments have. Um, ultimately, you're right, um, consultants, um, um, are, uh, can be good and they can be bad. Um, I've had full disclosure, this is the first city that I've managed that has a fire department. Um, so I can only tell you, um, I know what I know and I don't know what I don't know. Um, so in order to, um, set that department, um, on a trajectory for getting back to where everyone in that department has said it wants to be, which is a city of first. They tell me of the days when everybody wanted to come to work for Danville, um, when we were the top lead agency, and that's where we wanna get to. We want a roadmap to get us there and we wanna make sure that we are the most efficient. When I went to the police chief, the police chief's biggest concern is that we're a training department. We should not be in a situation where we are training at great expense, um, roughly about $50,000 into training and then have someone leave us and go elsewhere. We want to be the top notch department. The chief, um, said that when he was an assistant chief, deputy chief, he had looked at the same type of analysis and assessment to bring in, to really give an outside in look at the department so that the department heads, the chief, can actually look at making their departments more effective, more efficient, and give them a roadmap to get back to, um, that city of first, um, uh, performance standards um, that we all want and desperately need.
I'm gonna weigh in here, um, I'm in my, uh, fifth year, as you all know well, and I can tell you from day one, um, from day one, the, uh, concerns of the, the police department have been made to me and, um, I think this is a great step forward to really get down to, uh, what are the, what are the concerns, what are the obstacles? Um, and what do we need to correct or rearrange in order to become that place? I would love, after my next three years, to leave this position. As David has said, that we have people lined up wanting to be on our fire department, wanting to be on our police department.
Okay, now, let me, let me go back to my original statement. David, yeah, tell us what this group's gonna do.
They're going to come in and they're going to interview top down, they're going to actually spend time with each of the groups. Uh, what you have in front of you, um, uh, or in your package is a, um, a scope document that walks you through what they're going to do and when they're going to do it over a 120 day period. They're going to come in and they're going to actually be interviewed with everybody. Now, obviously, right now, we're in COVID-19, so most of that's going to be over the phone and it's going to be interactive web. Uh, they're also going to pull down all of our 911 data. Um, they're going to then start to look at our structure and work with the department um, on the rank and file as to how we're structured, how we do run. They're actually going to take, um, models that they have used for over several hundred departments and agencies that they've analyzed and benchmark us against those, um, so that we can actually see, um, uh, how effective are we, how effective can we be? Um, what is the, uh, underlying issues that are preventing us, um, from having top performance? They're also going to help us with, uh, what's called, um, KPIs or Key Performance Indicators, um, so that the departments have clear definable goals um, and have a roadmap for getting us to where we'll be the most successful agency. It is the, it is the deepest dive into an agency that you can get, um, which, if someone here, uh, tried to independently do that while juggling what we juggle, um, will take us about a year, but then we don't have any of the data from several hundred agencies to benchmark us against. They'll also look at all of the pay, the compensation, they also will help us. Um, uh, we obviously had, uh, it was hired before I got here, an outside consultant to help recruit, uh, for the, um, uh, fire chief, but they're also going to help us, um, select the best, um, fire chief out of the candidates, uh, as well. So from soup to nuts, um, and you have, um, your police chief on, um, the just, uh, yes, uh, the chief's on here. Um, he can give you some perspective as well, uh, because he also has weighed in, um, on the proposal. We don't operate in a vacuum, collectively, for the last three months, what we have been systematically trying to accomplish is, um, putting the base, uh, and the foundation in order to improve. And each of our chiefs and our- And each of our chiefs and our 911 director do want to do just that. They want to improve their agencies, but you have to, you know what you have, you see what you have, but you don't know what you don't know, which means the benchmarking of everything that we pull together and gather will allow us then to figure out, where do we stack up? Where are greatness, where's our inefficiencies? What are we doing now that can be improved? Where can we look for efficiencies? And more importantly, as we plan for the future, one of the things that is on your roadmap is that third fire station as well. We also want to make sure that, are there things we can be doing now, whether it's staffing, structure, or otherwise, to plan forward for that as well, based on our call volumes? The reason that the timing is now is that we have to do a slice of time, because once we enter COVID-19 era, as you know, our fire department is only serving backup on EMS, so we don't want to have artificial lower reporting on that data. Meanwhile, that same 911 data has affected the police department on certain spikes, so we need to be able to make that slice of that data before, so if we wait until the future, it's going to be rather muddied, if you will, because it's not true, real-time, valid data, if you will. The COVID-19 has started to spike up in certain areas that normally we wouldn't have spikes in.
Hey, David? Would anything that the consultant finds out, budget-wise, it wouldn't really affect the 2021 budget, right?
Actually, we anticipate in the 2021 budget, they won't be done in time for the 2021 budget, but I anticipate, given the state of our economy, that we actually will be coming back to the commission, most likely on a quarterly basis, and we will be amending our budget changing. I believe we'll be doing that for probably the next 18 to 24 months, sir.
Okay. That's due to the stuff we're going through now, I mean, the uncertainty of it all.
We've already, and we've got our finance director on the phone now. She can chime in very quickly and tell you what our management team already knows. This will just be proactively telling you what'll initially be in my budget proposed to the commission, the public, but if the CFO wants to give us a quick summation of what we're seeing now, it's affecting the current budget and what it will for the next, and you'll understand why we're looking for efficiencies, and the police department, the fire department, 911, all want to do their part as we look at where can we gain efficiencies, because those are essential employees, we're already short-staffed, we have to have those. So Michelle, if you just want to briefly chime in some of the data we talked about earlier in the week, and welcome back, by the way.
Thank you. We are looking at drastic drops, some in the third quarter and drastically in the fourth quarter for this fiscal year, and needing to cut, you know, around, probably around a 20% margin right now. And then for the next year's budget, we're gonna have to start out cutting over 30%, up to 35%, 40% out of the budget, because of all the places that are laid off and not working. Right now, this is gonna hit us harder than the initial or the recession did. Now, we may bounce back a little bit quicker than the five years it took us to bounce back from the recession, but that's the reason we'll probably have to have quarterly updates, because if we don't bounce back very quickly, we'll have to, you know, update because of that. If we start bouncing back, we might be able to update before that. But as of right now, you know, we're looking at 35% that, you know, possibly up to 40% of cuts because of the income not coming in.
Right, so that said, going back to Commissioner Cottle's comment. So you heard Q3, Q4, and for the public, understanding that, so our fiscal year starts in July, but for a quarter, January, February, March, Q1, April, May, June, Q2, and so every three months is a quarter, so when you go to October, November, December, you're Q4. This is 120-day study, so that would be the months, pretty much, of May, June, July, August, which means that once we get that data back, and we're coming to the mission to look at that Q3 and Q4 based on revenues versus expenses and expenditures, that yes, we will be utilizing this document to help tweak, looking for efficiencies in how we deploy our resources and services. Our department heads need the most valuable information now to help us all make decisions. Ultimately, yes, it's the city manager's budget being proposed, but we are utilizing the talent, the expertise, and the knowledge of our department heads to help guide us. You'll start seeing some social media being pushed out soon, showing some of the proud moments that staff are really, really reviewing things, and you'll see another on the agenda. You've already heard what our HR department's been able to do collectively with the commission on saving 300,000 to 400,000 in order to stay flat, because you all know that in February, I had alluded and informed you that we were looking at a 22% hit if we did not make some immediate changes. So you'll see some of that. So this study will address police, fire, and 911, and then give us that roadmap for the future.
Dave, the Center for Public Safety Management is connected with the ICMA?
Yes, that is actually a strategic partner, and originally was within the International City County Management Association, and then branched out. I myself have had experience with them in the past at other agencies. I gave to the commission an example of another agency that they did here in Kentucky, and then in the back of that proposal, you'll actually see, state by state, the wealth of agencies that they have done these independent performance assessments of. At the end of the day, if I was a firefighter, a dispatcher, or police officer, what you get out of this independent study is your roadmap for the future for success. That's what we're looking for here.
There's a single source of this service?
I know, there are state agencies that can do that. For instance, we could go to our league. The difference is that unless they have done systematically, so we're already, you know, state-certified, but they are the de facto national expert in this particular arena.
And I guess, my last question or concern is that these folks, because of the COVID-19, have no plans of coming to Danville to walk the city and see our facilities and meet our people face-to-face?
In there, initially, we will do everything remotely. We don't know where our COVID-19 restrictions will go. You'll see provisions in there that, yes, there is a window for them, and they have laid out COVID-19 as to how they would actually send one person who would report back to the team, whereas normally, they usually have a smaller assessment team come to your city. So they've laid out how they'll be able to do this, but we have to wait for essentially that Phase 1 restriction to be lifted, to be able to have them. Remember that COVID-19, for work purposes, travel is permitted, but we have to maintain the social distancing. So we have to get at least two of our Phase 1 restrictions lifted, which we anticipate potentially mid-June to occur. But again, I don't have a crystal ball when that'll be, sir.
Okay. David, if it's okay with you, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't get a comment or two from Tony, I know he sent us his comments on email, but I'd like to hear his thoughts on this idea, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely, I'll be.
Mayor Chief?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
We actually looked at something similar to this, probably about 10 years ago. It never followed up with it, I think Jay was the chief, maybe back then, Chief Noel. You know, it's always good to be evaluated and get independent, you know, experts to come in and evaluate, make sure you're at where you're at, and you're seeing the same picture, you know, and try to get to where you're trying to go. You know, it's got its benefits, as everything does, but it's always good to have an independent, you know, like our accreditation, they do certain things, it's not quite this, what they do with accreditation, but, you know, make sure that we're exercising the correct guidelines and best practices, you know, that's out there.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm glad to comment, I might come back to just simply salaries, but I feel where Tony's at, in terms of, it doesn't hurt to look at other things that we could be more efficient on. So, I think this is a good thing.
Any other comments?
I have some comments and some questions. The first sentence of this letter says that they are the exclusive provider. Does that mean they're the only ones that do that, and therefore, we did not have to put this out for a bid for proposal?
In this case, this is professional services, so yes, we're not required to put this out to a competitive bid. They are the exclusive provider of the unique model that they have. They are the de facto nationwide expert, there's no other entity that has amassed as many agencies, independently reviewed or otherwise, than them. They're the only ones with all of the benchmark data and the performance analysis tools in order to gauge similar-sized departments across all spectrums. They're the de facto repository, and because of their longstanding relationship with international city county managers nationwide, you can understand why most sitting county managers opt to go directly with them. Also, because you have a credentialed manager as your city manager, you'll also see that we have significant discounts in this proposal, right off the top, which were pretty hefty. The second thing is, is that because the city commission supports your city manager attending the regional and national conferences, you see that we actually have even additional discounts that were modeled into this proposal. So, yes, we could take the time to write up an entire scope of document, put it out to bid. I, you know, I will be surprised if anyone else can match what they do at this price at that level for the equivalent of four months of work.
So my biggest concern is, if we're looking at up to a possible 40% reduction in our budget moving forward from now, my biggest concern is, we're gonna get into lacking in services and furloughing employees, and we already get criticized for hiring consultants, and I think we probably need to think about sitting on as much money as we can right now. I'm not against this, I just think the timing is really bad.
I think the timing, I think your comments are well-taken, but I think the timing is absolutely right on mark, because we are going to have to look at deep cuts, and our department heads are going to be part of that, and they're going to have to have the best tools and resources at their fingertips on how to streamline their staffing, their departments, their purchases, everything. You're bringing to the table a team combined of several hundred years of experience, so it's not just David Milliron, it's not just, you know, the police chief or the fire chief or the 911 director. You're bringing together a very solid set of ammunition to help us navigate and get through what we are looking at. Every single staff member that's on this call knows firsthand and has known, because we've had a lot of discussion internally on what we're facing, so we're all looking for the tools and resources, and I doubt very much that if the police chief or fire chief or 911 director thought that it wasn't the appropriate time to spend it, that your city manager wouldn't be here asking for it.
I want to go back to my initial comments.
Sorry, what budget is this coming out of? Is this the general fund, is this the...
This is general fund out of the legislative executive, and your CFO has affirmed to me that we have sufficient professional services money left over in that line item.
I do understand the concern of expenditure funds. Two points to that. Number one, I don't think this environment we're in right now is going to present relief in our budget for some time to come. I'd hate to put this off for that period of time, because as I've said, my second point is, I really do want our police and fire department to be the place that these professionals want to come and be employed. And I have heard since day one that we've got to do something in the police department, we've got to do something in the fire department. I see this as doing something and getting to better solutions. Somebody speak...
Our fire chief is not here to weigh in on this.
We don't have a fire chief.
Well, our acting fire chief.
He's been funny.
No, I don't see that he logged in. But I did get his comments, and I do have his comments, and he said that, you know, he also reflected Commissioner Terry's comments of, is this the right time with the budget? But he also very quickly said he sees all the benefits, and if this makes the best sense for us now, absolutely. And I had quite a bit of dialogue, the chief was here. When I say chief, I get in trouble, because I have two chiefs. But Chief Gray is on the line, he saw all that dialogue and communications, he was party to it with the chief. Both chiefs were in that full dialogue last night, so if he wants to, you know, I don't want him to put words in the fire chief's, but he was party to it and saw his comments collectively, because we're having to social distance, we're not in rooms, we're all having to do this third-party, if you will. But yes, the chief, the fire chief endorsed it if we collectively felt it was the best thing to do for the city at this time.
David, if this passes today, when do you think this analysis will start?
Most likely, the first of May. We have to get the agreement in place, and then they will start to engage probably the first of the month. Collectively, we'll have a kickoff meeting remotely, very much like we do now, with the parties that'll be involved, and then they will actually work directly with the department, and then work down through their rank and file, interviewing them, setting up those, and like I said, it'll take about 120 days to complete the entire assessment. IT will be involved, because they'll be downloading our 911 CAD data in order to bring that into the assessment. One of the biggest concerns, and the police chief notes, we've had a lot of this conversation, is what is dragging us very, very hard? Where are we spending all of our time? Where can we find some efficiencies? Where can we find some efficiencies? Um, for instance, the police chief knows, I've talked to him about, you know, if, if one area is, um, say in, um, uh, on private property where offender vendors occurred. You know, how much time does that take where our police departments on private property, doing a police report, getting video, filling out the reports, all of that versus, um, uh, heat mapping and where we ought to be doing deployment of services in order to fight crime and things of that nature. So the assessment, um, will take about 120 days, um, but it's souped to nuts. And, um, uh, they, we will get a collaborative, uh, detailed report, um, that, uh, will be our, um, a sort of guiding light, if you will, um, through this pandemic and also the next, um, three to five years, if not longer, in order to, um, get us to where we need to be, which is the city of first in public safety. And that's what I think every man and woman, uh, wants in our agency right now.
I'd like to direct my question to the chief. Uh, do you feel like we have been operating in a defensive mode and this will help us be on the offensive?
When you say operating in a defensive mode, uh, does that, I didn't quite understand that context.
Will this help us get into more of an offensive road instead of a defensive where, you know, like, like David said, it, you will spend less time other places when, when, and you can be where you need to be? Is that?
Maybe the terms proactive and reactive would be better.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, the, uh, that's a little complicated. Uh, me and David have talked about some things and being more, we do need to be more technologically advanced as an agency than where we are at now. Uh, I think me and him both agree upon that. You know, again, you know, I think a lot of our problems result in staffing. When, as you all know, we have those, it's what it seems like, deep, uh, swings in staffing. We go from five and six people down, it seems like in a couple of months and have not been able to replenish that very quickly as we've had the last couple of years. So, you know, when you take those big cuts in staffing and you have to go through the academy, you know, those are years we are losing the ability to, to move forward in times. Uh, you know, bringing in somebody that can, uh, maybe show us some technological things. But, uh, it's also, and you know, if we can fix the retention problem, you know, it's going to be a win-win, you know, so it, it's a complicated, uh, mixture of things that have to take place there for it all to be, you know, a good fix.
Well, I think this has been a, you know, this has been an issue for a long time, even predating, uh, Mayor Paris, really. And I think prior commissions and it, with the best intentions have tried to address it, but it's been more like throwing spaghetti against the wall. You know, just trying to maybe treat, uh, treat the wound instead of the cause. So, uh, I don't know. I, I think this is probably a good idea and, and I have the same concerns as Commissioner Terry regarding the budget and the timing. But, um, I think the point is well taken that maybe this is the best time. So, uh, I think it's a, I think it's something we ought to undertake.
Mr. Mayor, can I call for the question then? You certainly may, Mr. Atkins, and thank you. Question's been called. Roll call, please.
I want to get to my spaghetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Mr. Saris?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Next item on our agenda is the, uh, contact contracts with, uh, Spectrum Internet. Um, with that said, Mr. Milliron, I think you would be best to address this.
I'm very, very proud of Nick Warren and the IT team. They took a very deep dive. Again, we're looking across the board. We're going very deep looking for cost cutting and cost savings. We have everything from telephone service, cable service, um, uh, with different companies. He has done a, uh, analysis with his team, uh, and has found that, um, uh, we've lost one of our commissioners. Denise?
She's practicing her magic act. Oh, here she comes.
Okay, there she is. Okay. I, I think we're supposed to see your faces. That's why I'm, and, and our city attorney, Gosh knows where he is, but that's okay. All right. So, uh, in, um, doing so, um, Spectrum has stepped up. They're one of our, um, current providers. And it said that, um, they will upgrade our service. They'll do a, they'll waive costs for about a hundred thousand dollars worth of fiber. And by consolidating, um, all of our services into, um, uh, service agreements, we are going to, um, save, uh, eighty thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty cents on an annual basis. So we get, uh, greater, uh, service. A wastewater plant that we currently can't get fiber to, um, but once we get that plant upgraded, we'll be able to get fiber to them. But this is a, uh, increase. We've also done some consolidation. For instance, it didn't make sense to have, um, fiber across the street at the fire station when we're going actually So in doing this, um, we consolidated the services at city hall and realized that we can just do peer to peer. I know that sounds, um, fancy, um, but think of it as like two cans in a thread, um, shooting across the street to make sure that they have full-time, real-time communications. So that way we, um, uh, saved across the board. Um, and so this is a, um, uh, there are, um, I provided you one set of the contracts. The contracts are the same for every site, um, but I didn't want to give you a three-inch binder, very much like the healthcare. The city attorney is on, um, the call. He obviously has to review all, um, contracts to form. This is a request that the commission authorized the mayor to sign and execute the contract once approved, um, uh, as to form with the city attorney. And ultimately we'll start moving this into place ASAP. And like I said, it's got a, uh, cost savings to the city, just shy of eighty-one thousand dollars.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve for the purpose of discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. We're in discussion. If there is further discussion.
Well, my comment is always great to have a proposal on the table that saves us a lot of money. And this is one. So congratulations to all staff involved. My only question is, um, the Bunny Davis Center. Why such an increase in the Bunny Davis Center?
The reason for that is that, um, we're taking them in effective July 1st, so we're going to have to have full freight of cost. So that's why it looked like it jumped. You've only been paying a portion of that as part of the, uh, agreement where you have been, uh, uh, paying, uh, fifty percent. So that's why you're seeing a large increase there.
Okay. I would just like to point out that the gentleman who saved us this money is a former bait bulldog football player.
He's a taller than Saint too, brother. Don't leave that out there.
You know, I have no clue what that means.
A bait bulldog.
What the bait bulldog?
Curious question. Why were, uh, why were these contracts or these agreements separate previously, the fire, police and city hall?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know. Uh, before I got here. And, um, you know, I know that there's always been one-off agreements because in, in the telecommunications, telephony world, they have like, it's almost like if you have a business, home phone, et cetera, they tie everything to an address. So they don't look at a sort of master services agreement, if you will. And so they have individual agreements. Now, what didn't make sense is you have a fire department right across the street. And last time I checked, that fire building's been there a long time. And then you have city hall here. So you would think that, you know, we would have run fiber right across the street normally. Well, because you're going to have a building right next door, you'll have fiber. So your police, your 911, your city hall, um, uh, yeah, police, fire, 911 and city halls will all be consolidated under a single point contract. And that's where you want to get. Um, and then in some areas where you have these little mini, um, uh, dishes, if you will, depending on terrain, we're able to, uh, uh, send signals to other locations. And that's why you have intended some things on your water tanks. So what we did is we took a very hard look at, um, our contracts, our services, where we're providing, uh, services, and then where can we get some efficiencies and cut phenomenal costs? And actually get better service than what we have now. And, um, so long story short, I can't answer your question for things that occurred before I got here. But what I can say is that they're getting fixed now. And I'm very proud of the staff for stepping up. Consistently, every department's finding ways to cut costs and save money. And that's a tough thing to do, knowing that you went through the great recession, you went through nine 11, and most governments were cut. But I always tell folks with technology, there's always a better way to be more effective, more efficient. And, um, your management team here at the city has two pages of proposals in order to, uh, get even more efficient and more efficient and cut costs. And we're working on those diligently.
Do I hear any further comments? Hearing none, Chair. We'll call the question. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Mr. Saris?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes. Item five is the, um, second reading of ordinance number nineteen forty-eight, uh, which is, uh, about the occupational license fee and net profits tax. You will recall, we had the first reading before all of this COVID-19 became a real issue. And so we're back to needing to do a second reading. Do, um, do I hear a motion for that second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Who was it?
That was Rick.
Thank you, Rick, and thank you, Denise. We are in discussion, if any.
And, and for clarification, is that a, a, a motion, so moved for approval of the second reading?
Yes, I move to approve the second reading.
All right, thank you. And Madam Clerk, would you please read it into the record?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance number nineteen forty-eight and ordinance amending chapter sixteen taxation, Article One in general of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Danville, Kentucky, to add a new section sixteen dash two pertaining to the designation of an authorized agent for billing, collection and enforcement of occupational license fees and net profit taxes.
David, could you, just for the record, kind of hit the highlights again real quick, since it's been a while?
Yes, um, so this, uh, goes back to two thousand and five when, uh, at the time, the city commission engaged with a interlocal agreement with Doyle County, uh, to actually be its, um, uh, collection agency for, um, the benefit of our occupational license fees and net profits tax. The city, uh, prior to my arrival had invested and acquired, uh, software. The company is Castell out of Salt Lake City, Utah. Um, we are working on implementation of that software and will actually have the capability now of, uh, performing those collections on our behalf. We estimate that, uh, conservatively, uh, we will save roughly sixty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars on annual basis to be able to bring that, uh, in-house and do it ourselves. We have met with the, um, county and the finance staff at the county. They're well aware that, um, uh, this is in play. We're required under, um, uh, the agreements to get ample and adequate notice. Um, and so, um, as your city attorney has said, um, and certainly the mayor has echoed that this, uh, was a first reading. Um, and in order to be able to give notice to the county, we've got to get the second reading, um, through. So since we had the special called meeting, we went ahead and put this on, uh, the agenda item so that we can actually get formal notice with approval of the commission, uh, that we're going to, uh, cancel the interlocal agreement effective, um, uh, midnight on December thirty-first. And then, um, uh, we will be responsible starting, uh, in twenty twenty-one, uh, for the collection of the occupational license fees and profits, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any further comments?
Well, I want to remind us that we've already put staff in place to accomplish this task, so this does not require any new staff.
That is correct.
Okay.
There are no further comments. Uh, Chair will call the question and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Saris?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Mr. Cottle?
Yes.
Item six, and our final item, is the second reading of ordinance number nineteen forty-six. This was, uh, in regards to the zone change out on Stanford Road. Chair will entertain a motion for the second reading.
I move for approval of the second reading of ordinance number nineteen forty-six.
Thanks, Commissioner Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Terry. We are in discussion.
Do we want to remind people what this is exactly, too, just for the record?
Uh, that's fine. This is actually a zone change, um, that was required by, uh, Apex. Um, this was, um, this is indeed the, uh, second reading. Um, and, um, uh, since, um, it's a plan and zoning, I'm going to allow the city attorney, uh, to weigh in on specifics.
Sure. And, and before we do that, Madam Clerk, would you read it into the record, please?
Yes, this is the second reading of ordinance number nineteen forty-six. An ordinance changing the zone from HB Highway Business and AV Agriculture to LI Light Industrial for approximately eleven point four six zero acres, more or less of real property located at thirty twenty-five Stanford Road in the city of Danville.
Thank you. So, you know, the, the title gives the overall, um, idea of what's going on. But you have the current zone change, which is, does not meet the intended use of the site by the owner. And so a zone change request was made. It was recommended for approval based upon certain findings of fact, which we reviewed at our previous in-person meeting, whenever that was. And again, this is for a little over eleven acres and, and changes it, um, to, to highway business and agriculture and light industrial.
Any further comments? If none, Chair will recall the question and ask for the vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Mr. Saris?
Yes.
So seeing how this is a special called meeting, um, we are not allowed to discuss any further business.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we ask, uh, city staff to take back to the rest of the city staff, our congratulations and our thank yous for keeping the city running as smoothly as it has been doing, doing this straight new time?
I think that would be very appropriate.
Excellent.
Think that would be very appropriate.
Internally, staff wants to, uh, thank the mayor and commissioners. Certainly staff wants to thank the mayor and commissioners. You all have on different occasions provided the staff lunch. And I know the staff has been very, very appreciative to the mayor and commission. I know you all don't bankroll a lot of money on your position, but that's obviously not why you are elected officials. But the staff certainly recognizes that you have shown your appreciation to them. And they have felt it in their stomachs.
Now, Mr. Milliron, you made the call. Go ahead, Kevin.
No, I, nothing.
Please speak.
Well, I just wanted to say hello to Earl. Earl has been very patient sitting there. And I know he has 25 words or less from me this morning, but I've not seen him in quite a while.
Earl is unusually quiet today.
Mr. Milliron, normally, normally when you talk about technology and how technology allows us to do things better, I think these meetings are an exception to that rule because we've had six items. It's taken us an hour and 31 minutes. And personally, I can't wait until we get back to being able to have face-to-face. I think they just move a lot faster.
Are you saying we were hungry? Well, Mayor, but Mayor, when you say those, you've got to take into account, we do have the authority to mute people like Earl, which does save some efficiencies at certain times.
Yeah, can we figure out some way to do that at City Hall? That'd be cool.
I'm just kidding.
It's kind of, it's kind of shepherd's hook.
We just hungry, we just hungry for a get-together, that's all.
That's right. Good to see you all, by the way.
All right, last thing we might do, everybody put your arms out. All right, let's give everybody a big hug.
Come on, Brian, the interpreter, you have to hug too. There you go. And thank you for being here this morning.
Tell Mr. Bridget I love the pills.
Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there a second?
Can I make one for executive session?
Nope.
No, sir.
We've got a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
Yeah, I think Mr. Atkins did it.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Light shine.
Love you guys.
You too. Be safe. See you soon.
Be safe. Stay healthy.
Thank you, Dan.